We will move on to our 6.5. Public hearing where the Board of Supervisors will consider an ordinance adopting the California Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance. And it looks like we have Mr. Collins here. If you'd like to come sit up, up here if you'd like. Yeah, either side, it's up to you. Well, that way you have, each have a microphone. There you go.
I have some handouts too for you guys if you'd like them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Director Darby. I'm just here to introduce Chief Building Official, William Collins. He goes by Bill. He had me stuck there for a moment. And he's going to, he did the work on the M Welo ordinance and he will present it to you today.
All right. Hello. So, the model efficiency, sorry, the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, or also known as M Welo, was put into place to reduce the use of water to landscape projects around the state. According to the State Water Resources Board, they're saying, they're claiming that 50% of water directed to, to urban areas is used for irrigation for landscapes. Jurisdictions are required to adopt 49.2.6, and there's some letters, there's about five sections they're supposed to adopt of the model efficient, of the state Model Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. The California Green Building Code Sections 4.3 and 5.3 is adopted already by Lake County, require that we either enforce a local water ordinance, or that we enforce the state of California's Department of Water Resources Model Efficient Landscape Ordinance, M Welo. In my opinion, due to the fact that the projects that we see up here usually, somebody comes in and has a, an acre lot or something, and they drop a manufactured home on there is a big part of what we're doing here. Most of the projects that we go to do not include landscape. They're just, they're building a structure here due to the fact that they don't have a bunch of money to, you know, to make this nice landscaped area out front in the backyard. So, the majority of the projects would not, do not even come in to, need to comply with this. The, the, the trigger is for new construction projects equalling 500 square feet of landscape, or rehabilitated landscape projects with 2,500 square feet of, of landscape. So, the majority of what we see that this would apply to are like, we have a apartment complex going up in Kelseyville. They're doing a bunch of fake grass, things like that, to make sure that they're not using all the water. I provided you guys with some pictures of what, what I searched online and what my, what online says that they're supposed to look like. And, and the pictures comply with what I've read of, of what a M Welo approved landscape should look like. Basically, you're trying to cut down the water usage, use drought tolerant stuff. They want you to shade. They want you to put in some fertilizer, topsoil, things like that. If you're, if you come in to get a building permit and you are not planning on doing the landscaping 500 square feet or more, then you are not required to comply with this. If you build the house, and then in a year or two, you decide to do some landscaping, unless it's landscaping that requires a permit, you do not need to comply. I printed out some stuff from the M Welo Guidebook. That's what's on the information here. So, they claim that it meant, that M Welo eliminates or minimizes environmental health dangers such as, and there's, some of these don't really apply to Lake County, but a few of them are really important to us. One, wildfires that spread due to flamble and dry plants. Because they want you to water your stuff, and they want you to put stuff in there that's, that's not going to die if it doesn't get a lot of water. Contaminated water due to improper design and installation of backflow protection devices. Anybody that's getting city water, you need to make sure the backflow is installed correctly, make sure that we're not getting, especially with underground piping, it's a big concern about backflow. Slip and fall accidents, as well as flooding and pondings of streets, sidewalks, and water due to irrigation runoff, because they're limiting how, how you can spray your water, where it's supposed to go, with the type of sprayers they're using. Trip and fall accidents resulting from exposed tree roots due to improper irrigation. And injuries sustained by landscape maintenance crews working in street medians. So, we had a choice of either adopt, since we already have the California Green Building Code adopted, and it specifies, it refers you back to, to California Water Resources M Welo. When I talked to them, I had a meeting with them, a Zoom meeting with them a couple of months ago, and they said that we only had to adopt a certain portion because we were already adopted the rest of it. We made the determination that it was better to put it all in one, adopt the whole section, put it all in one spot in the county code versus going to the California Green Building Code and having you go to the Water Resources Board, and then also go into these, this ordinance that they say has to be in or adopted. And by the way, the 492.6A, 3B, C, D, and G, all has to do with putting in fertilizer, tilling the topsoil, things like that, to make it to where the roots of plants can grow down anymore.
Supervisor Spatia?
Thank you for bringing this. I do have a question, because one of the words that really stuck out to me when I read through this and during your presentation is "urban."
Yes.
The use of the word "urban," and we're, we're not very urban. And I'm wondering, can this, what would be acceptable to the state? Because obviously, the state wants us to either do our own water efficiency ordinance or follow this. Is it possible to say in the community growth boundaries, you have to follow this? Would that be acceptable? It's just...
I do not, I do not believe so, because when I read the California Green Building Code, which is adopted by us as well, and we're not allowed to reduce the, we have to go with more stringent if we want to adopt something, we can't reduce the requirements. So, the Green Building Code kicks us over to, to the California State Water Resources, M Welo. And then when I talked to them, I said, "Well, I'm already got that adopted. Why should I, why do I need to adopt this other, this single portion of your, of your M Welo ordinance? You know, why are you asking me to adopt just this one section when I already have it set up that my, my Green Building Code sends me over there?" And they didn't have a very good answer there. I talked to three people, and they got their supervisor, and pretty much just said that we have to, we have to either adopt an ordinance that's more stringent than what they require, or we have to use theirs, and that we also have to adopt this, this section into our code. It didn't make sense to me why... Yeah. Yeah, and 492.6 has got to do with the landscape design plan. And like I was saying, I don't think that we can reduce any of the requirements. I think it specifically said that it has to be more stringent. We can, we can adopt something that's more stringent, or we have to go to the state Model Efficiency, Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance.
And, and there's no separation within M Welo whether you're on well or special district water or anything like that? Doesn't have an acreage maximum or minimum or anything like that?
Not that I have seen, I read through a bunch of stuff on it. I've been doing a lot of research on this to find out exactly what our requirements are here, because we, as my understanding, it is not being enforced before I got here. So, when it come on my plate that we were supposed to get this adopted, I've been doing a lot of research trying to find out what we need to do. And like I was saying, what's going to happen, what my, what my vision is, is that there are some checklists that you fill out at the counter, and if your property doesn't meet these, the 500 square feet, if you're not planning on putting 500 square feet, if you're putting a single-family dwelling or something, you're not planning on putting a 500 square feet of landscape in. If you're going to say, "No, I'm not, I don't have the money for that right now," then there is no requirement for you. You fill out the checklist that says that, that you're not doing it, and you don't have to submit a landscape plan. But as soon as you say that you're going to do 500 square feet or more of landscape in the checklist, then you're going to have to fill out and provide a landscape plan. And like I said, and it's only if, the, when you read it, it talks about only if there's a design review, a building permit review, or a permit required. So, if you build the home, and then in a few years, you want to put in your landscape, it is my interpretation that you don't have to comply with this, because there's no plan review required, there's no design review for, we don't have any ordinance here that's requiring a design review for a, somebody's private property, a single-family dwelling, it's property on a quarter acre that they're going to put in some landscape.
As long as you don't trigger anything.
Correct.
Vice Chair Pyska?
Yeah, I appreciate that we're moving towards compliance with this. I just came back from LA County, and the drought apparently doesn't exist there. Everything is very lush and green. And so, you know, this is definitely the direction we need to go in. I think there's a lot of information here. There was a lot that you all emailed me yesterday. I think what would be really helpful for us and the public is to see a presentation on what this changes for us, so everybody has a clear understanding. But I'd also like to see how we could kind of customize this for our county. And maybe that's something that the drought task force could work on. We adopt the, the necessary codes to come into compliance, but how can we enhance it for our rural communities? We know when people build a house, they don't submit landscaping. That's not, that's something that happens in our county. You know, that's something that comes down the road when you have more money and you can kind of do work over time. So, that's something that we need to address. That's kind of a loophole that's going to be outstanding, no matter where you live. You could, a couple of years down the road, put in a 5,000-square-foot lawn, and that's going to be a problem. So, those are my suggestions. I would like this to come back in the near future with a presentation that we, that the public can clearly understand, we can understand, kind of bring all the pieces together, and then some next steps on how we can enhance and customize it for our county.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add?
Oh, I was just going to say that what the law does require is that there has to be this type of water-efficient landscape ordinance, and it has to be at least as effective as the state model, or you simply apply the state model. But Supervisor Pyska is correct, there's a great deal of components to the model, and also a great deal of preparation that has to be done, as I'm sure the Chief Building Official knows, in terms of the documentation, for landscape documentation when that need arises. And there are a lot of distinctions that are made depending upon the environmental circumstances. So, it's not, it's not something you can cut and paste into. It really does require some analysis when it's applicable.
Yeah, and one other thing I forgot to mention, I love that gray water is part of this. This is something that I've been bringing up since I came here. And how can we really make this easy for everybody to either retrofit in their homes or for new construction? We, we know that's going to affect special districts. They really need us to be embracing gray water procedures. So, I just, I'm delighted to see that that's in there, and I think that we can enhance that too. Yep.
And just so everybody knows, the, the M Welo considers gray water, recycled water, all that stuff in the same usage. They don't, they don't separate it. So, if you're using gray water, that you're, you know, that you're harvesting or something, or stormwater you're harvesting, you don't get more grass. It's, you get the, it's all the same amount of water. They're, they're considering all the waters together. They call it a one-water rule.
Yep.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Always as we're implementing these ordinances, you know, we went through this when we were building, rebuilding after the fires, and we all know how challenging that was for everybody on the budgets, or depending what they had in their insurance to rebuild. This is one more cost. That's always my concern when we're doing, this is one more cost of somebody who may not be able to build that home they want to, or, or rebuild it. So, understanding that for a, what kind of plan is it again? A landscaping plan?
Yes.
Do we have any idea what that costs to do a landscaping plan on, on a single family, you know, a home, a residential home for somebody? I mean, because these costs also affected folks when we were coming back and rebuilding from the fires, when they're like, "Oh, everybody needs sprinklers in their homes now." You know, and so, folks had to make that decision, whether they had enough money to build a stick-built home, or if they were going to use a manufactured home. And when you're rebuilding your home after it burns, you know, with just how you've been through, and everything, every little cost counts as we're moving through that process. So, just understanding that and what this is going to add on to somebody building a home is, you know, I think something we all need to consider when we're doing that, because we already know the housing stock is down, it's a challenge right now to build homes, interest rates are going up, you know. So, anyway, understanding those costs that we're going to be adding on, you know, home, because you're saying, "Yeah, they could be exempt if they say they're not going to do something." But, you know, usually, most folks, especially in some areas, take on Hidden Valley, other areas, you know, they may be coming in with a landscaping plan now. So, one more added cost to building a home here. So, we need more homes, but we're going to continue putting ordinances and, you know, these stumbling blocks in front of people. To me, you know, every time we do something like that, it's, it's a challenge, you know, because they say, "Oh, it's only another 2,500." "Oh, it's another $5,000." That's a lot. That could be your counters, that could be the rooms that you're building. We all encountered it, we saw it. And like I said, you know, manufactured homes are much better than they were back in the 70s and 60s and 70s, but some folks after rebuilding, after the fires and stuff, had to go in that direction, because you're on, you're on a limited budget. So, that's my concern. I know you guys probably don't have the specific answers, but any idea on that would be the education process I'd like to see.
Yeah, so, to start off with, that's part of the reason, the cost is part of the reason, and the other reason is that we don't see very many people doing it. It's part of the reason why I wanted to stick with the model code and not, not enhance it more, kind of what Supervisor Pyska was mentioning, adding some things in for ours to keep it from skirting the, the system. But if, as we do that, it's going to require people, more people to have to comply with this. To follow up with your question, I don't know the price, but there is something in the Guidebook that talks about the, the landscape design plan and irrigation design plan must be signed by licensed landscape architect, licensed landscape contractor, or an authorized person per California Business and Professionals Code and the California Code of Regulations. So, it's not going to be, you know, it's not, generally, if you want to build your home, we'll let you make your own plan if you can do it, and it looks neat and we can understand it. You're going to go prescriptive, it's not a problem. You could come in with all your stuff. If you draw it out, fine, you could make your own plan, and we'll, we'll give you a permit for it. This right here says that you're not going to get, you can't do that. So, you're going to have to pay somebody, a professional, to make that plan for you.
Yeah, and, I mean, just being realistic, that's not going to happen. It's not in anybody's budget. I'm four years into my house, and I'm still out there every weekend with my shovel trying to figure it out. So, you know, it's, I think, when I talk about customizing it to our community, like giving suggestions for, you know, what is appropriate to grow here, what's not, what's sustainable, you know, how can you use your, your gray water and your catch, catchment water? Those are the kinds of things that I'm talking about. Not necessarily making it more cumbersome for people that are trying to rebuild, because the majority of the people are building, the majority of the people that are building just don't have this in their budget.
Yeah. And when I look back at what I've seen since I've been here, we haven't got, we're not getting anybody hardly that's coming in and talking about doing this landscaping, you know. We haven't provided them with the thing to do, the checklist yet, because we're still working on it. But my vision of what I see when I go out on inspections and check on stuff is that hardly anybody's putting landscaping in up here. So, if, with the model code out, that they're, that they're saying that we have to enforce, I don't think that very many people are going to be affected, because I don't think that many people are, are doing that kind of project. Now, you know, a lot of times, somebody's got this dream of making this big house there, and we're struggling with this sometimes. They come and they bite off a little bit more than they can chew. And, you know, at the beginning, you say, "Oh, I got this money, and oh yeah, I'm going to do this, this, and this." And then you just get like halfway through the project, you know, you're, you're coming up short, and then the, you know, now we're out four years on trying to get the permit closed out.
Yeah. Well, again, I think it would be helpful for us to see a presentation on, you know, how this is going to change things the day that we adopt this ordinance, and suggestions on how, moving forward, we can improve that process.
Ms. Grant, did you have something to add before?
I, I was just going to say that I think that a presentation, from what Supervisor Pyska is talking about, can include a lot of definitions to make sure everyone's clear on what applies where. And it's, it's never a question of trying to avoid the, the requirements under an ordinance that the state imposes. It's a question of how best to comply within, within Lake County's environmental landscape. And again, it has to be as responsive as possible, not necessarily more stringent, but it has to get you to the same place. And information like hardscape and areas that would require irrigation, et cetera, all of those things can be factors that can be considered by people. If they're planning it at the time they're considering construction, it may be easier for them than if they plan out, you know, a lush tropical garden and then realize, "Oh, my heaven, that would cost more than that just cost me to build the house." So, those are the kind of things that a presentation might include for your board.
Supervisor Spatia, and then thank Supervisor.
Yeah, I have a question for Ms. Grant. You read back to us that if we create our own ordinance, it needs to be effectively the same? Is that the exact words? Or, just because, what does that mean if that is the exact words from Welo? Because again, I can't help, I, I'm stuck, sorry if I'm stuck, but I'm stuck on the 50% of the water is used for urban irrigation. Well, okay, that, that's, that's just not correct for us. I know where I live, there's not enough irrigation going on. I wish people had more landscape yards, but we, we don't do that. So, putting in rules and regulations that seem to go against what we're even, we're not abusing the system, unlike your experience that you just shared with us in your recent days, I just, I'm, I'm wondering what effectively the same might mean? And can we maybe explain enough so that we can look at specific areas of the county saying, "If you're on city water, or if you're in a community growth boundary, this is the expectation, because you're a part of a larger body of water that's being shared by everybody, and you can't abuse it by having huge amount of irrigation needs when there's so many other people that are part of the same system versus if you're in the middle of a 200-acre area and you're just by yourself." I, I don't know, I'm just, it's not specific what I'm saying, but I'm just kind of curious if we can create rules, or if it's literally, this is the base, and we could only make it more stringent?
It has to be at least as effective as the model. Now, this is all codified in the California Code of Regulation, so I can read that from you, to you in just a minute. But keeping in mind that the overall purpose of this ordinance, and again, it does, as has been pointed out several times, it speaks to conditions in an urban setting. So, but you're still talking about, for example, creating conditions to, to support life in the soil by reducing compaction, incorporating organic matter that increases water retention, minimizing energy use by reducing irrigation water requirements, conserving water by capturing and reusing rainwater and gray water whenever possible, protecting air and water quality by reducing power equipment, protecting existing habitat, and creating new habitat by choosing local native plants, climate-adapted non-natives, and avoiding invasive plants. So, those are the overarching goals of the M Welo.
Vice Chair Pyska?
Yeah, and so, one of the codes, why I had spoken with previous staff about this is, you know, when you're doing new construction, you plum in your, or you stem in your, your gray water. So, it's there if you ever want it. You don't have to use it, but it's like a really simple little thing that you do when you're building your house. And then down the road, if anybody wants to use that for irrigation, it's there. But we don't have that right now. I did it in my house, it makes a huge, I water so many things with bathwater. So, those are the types of steps that I would like to see, and, and education too, for the community, like when you're building a house, take these steps. It costs you sometimes dollars to do it now, rather than thousands of dollars down the road.
And just to add to the conversation, I don't disagree with some of the ideas that are in there, and I think that I'd like to better understand what does effectively similar to what's being proposed, and what is their definition of rural? And can we look at, this is mandatory in these areas, and this is highly recommended for these areas? Because again, I am also concerned about the costs, where we're trying to build more houses, but yet at the same time, we're, we're creating further burdens for those that want to build not just houses, but a nice property. So, I know you don't see many of those. I'd love to see more of those, but we're going to see the same, or less, if we go ahead and move forward with exactly what's being proposed. And I hate the idea of using a loophole where you don't put it on your main permit, but then you go back afterwards. I'd love to get people to comply and, and do the things we're looking to have done, but not necessarily forcing them and mandating it in all across the board, because it's just that one word, rural. And I just feel like this is very heavy towards the Bay Area, high-density residential areas, LA area, things like that, not in a, in a much more rural landscape.
Well, and it's, it's natural landscaping that a lot of people do here. It's not, you don't have to have the front lawn and the back lawn. You're not...
Well, in fact, we shouldn't have any, any lawn.
It just doesn't work.
We've had that discussion here before.
And I would like to just piggyback on what Adita was talking about. You know, the California Code of Regulations said, what she said, but the, the California Green Building Code, which we're not allowed to reduce restrictions in there either, says that it's whichever is more stringent, our local ordinance or the model ordinance.
I think the presentation will be a good, it will be a good measure also for people to understand, and I'm, I'm looking at it from a dispute standpoint. So, if we lay it out, I just, I have a lot of neighbors amongst neighbors that come, like we had one today, that may have an interpretation of the ordinance and say, "Well, they, they're doing this." And they didn't come to you if they don't understand the full realm of what you're bringing forth, if that makes sense. And I know you deal with it just as much. Or if someone's building, and, you know, they, they might see something that's less than 500 feet or whatever, but they'll still make the complaint, and then you're back into that. I just, I look at it from that standpoint, because I get so many of them. So, and it's just interpretation, you know, that's all.
Yeah, we're getting a bunch of calls like that as well, and I can see them coming to us as well. And we could prepare something for you, come back for September 6th, BOS meeting? Would that work for you guys?
Yeah.
I think we're fine?
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah, and, and just one more thing is, you know, you mentioned firewise landscaping, that's a big component for all of us. And then I, the Zone Zero around the house too, where you need to have five feet of no vegetation around your foundation. Those are two things that, you know, may not be required in an urban setting, but would be applicable here.
It'll be September 13th, we don't meet on the 6th.
Oh, that's a holiday weekend.
Right.
Labor Day.
All right. Is the 13th okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, I'll go ahead, I think Supervisor Simon?
One more comment or suggestion, maybe to the CAO and maybe public services, but this building here, a lot of folks come into it. And right now, we have a lush green thing going all the way around it, and we're watering it, and some of the stuff we're reading here, it runs out on the sidewalk. You guys have seen that before probably, you know, when it's being watered. So, maybe as we're moving through this process, a great example of what we're talking about right around the courthouse, as we're transitioning into this, you know, obviously, climate change, fire disaster, would be neat. We could showcase, hey, this is what we've done here at the courthouse. I, I just think it'd be an opportunity for us to educate and say, "This is what we're talking about when we're moving into this." So, just as, I know Lars is probably like, "What's he talking about?" But I didn't go over that with them, Lars, I'm not. But anyway, just a suggestion, that, that would be something neat. And maybe we could tie that into the Risk Reduction Authority and, you know, having some examples that people are looking at as they're coming into the courthouse. So, just throw it out there.
I would take it one step further, and we should be leading by example with all of our properties, whether it's defensive space or this.
Yeah. I will open it up for the public. Joan, if you'd like to come up and state your name for the, for the record, and we'll start in three minutes.
Joan Moss. Recently this year, I have represented the public in a committee that is trying to get... Recently this year, I have represented the public in a committee that is trying to get a, a Big Valley Basin water update. And it's very difficult to work on a committee that is, Marina Dela Giaris had done a really good job, but it's very difficult to comply with an ordinance that's local that will satisfy the Department of Water Resources. The rules on the committee are impossible. And do you have a committee put together to work out your ordinance?
Not at this time.
Okay. I just want to warn you that it is very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say that we would definitely will be working with the Department of Water Resources on this ordinance, and of course, including administration.
Thank you. Todd, I see your hand up.
Yes. Yeah, you're wondering why Bay Barrow Services is weighing in on this, but it really has nothing to do with that. I want to acknowledge what Moke said about, I'm sorry, Supervisor Simon said about leading by example. I'm, I'm almost 60 years old, lived through the mega drought of 1976 and '77, and appreciate this conversation. I also remember years ago, the Press Democrat in Santa Rosa, their building used to have this huge green lawn in front. And in, you know, in, in response to water conservation, they stopped watering it and put up a sign that said, brown is beautiful. And so we have to learn to adapt to the climate in which we live, and I, I just, just, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist. I had to weigh in on this conversation because we need to be water-wise, especially with climate change. And so I appreciate this discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Metcalf. And then, so with that, I don't see any other hands up, so I'll bring it back to the board, close public input, and I see Supervisor Spatia, you ever been it?
I just want to clarify a little bit of confusion that I got after the public comment that we received from Joan Moss. We have an ordinance to approve in front of us today, which basically says we're going to be following well-oiled. Okay, because I heard that you will be working with water resources, more of the implementation of the ordinance?
Yes, I just want to get their feedback because the Department of Water Services is the ones that actually implemented the chapter 2.7, the entire, they had feedback on the entire ordinance, so M-Well-o ordinance for chapter 2.7. So I think that their input would be beneficial with whatever we come up with or we were proposing.
But the ordinance is being proposed today, are we?
Right, but we're coming back. I understood, I think, that we were not going to vote on the ordinance today and that we're coming back on September the 13th to make a presentation for it, ordinance, and that I think that will give us ample time to reach out to Department of Public Works.
In my, in my mind, that I thought we were going to move forward and then do a presentation to explain what it is we're moving forward with, so, okay.
I apologize if I misunderstood.
No, that's just me. It seems everyone else was on the same page, I fell off.
All right. Any other comments or? Okay, looks like we can come back to this on September 13th, and we appreciate the presentation, and we'll see you then.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to entertain a short break before we get on to our next item, and we will be back at 10:30.